Before we bring the young men in who are going to lead us in the pledge, unfortunately, as much as this has happened lately, I would like to hold a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Charleston, for the gentleman who chose to use hate in a church, and I would like to have a moment of silence for those who were lost. Thank you. And now, we have this evening with us again, which is our summer tradition, members of the National Junior ROTC Candidates from Garfield High School here to lead us in the pledge.
Freeze in. Coles.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Coles.
Flags about. Flags about.
Left, elbow, face.
Rifle ready, cut. Ready, cut.
Ready. Cut.
Coles, coles.
Freeze in. Arms. Close to coles. Ready. Two. Right shoulder. Arms. Ready. Cut. Coles. Arms.
Now, we have a whole different group of them today than we had last meeting, so I think Mr. Greco is going to introduce them.
Especially not bands, this is their first time they ever did this. All right, Ned Anderson, second class fellow, he's going to be a sophomore next year. Shorty is going to be a junior, right? Okay, I'm trying to get this right now. Johnny Griffin, Kittle and Cadet Larios are both going to be seniors. Cadet Larios just returned from the Naval Academy Summer Program. Hopefully, the rest of them will be heading that way soon. Cadet Larios is the son of Miss Larios in the back. You can step in here. Very proud of him. And I saw my brother-in-law is going to be Cadet Senior Chief, so he handles all Cadet issues this year instead of me. You got it? Gentlemen.
Right. Arms. Left, face. Forward, march. Thank you.
Okay, now is our time for our community and school reflections. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? A little quiet.
Just a couple of things. Attended NLLCT Scholarship Luncheon on the past Sunday. My honor, Patrick Bravo and Superintendent. Very nice affair. Shorter than usual. That's very nice affair. Got an opportunity to celebrate a lot of wonderful students. And just fortunate enough, those students were from Akron Public Schools, so it's always good to see. Attended a couple of celebrations in various churches that also honored our graduates in the community of Mount Calvary, Arlington Church of God, New Hope Baptist Church. You know, we talk a lot about the importance of connecting community and school. To see that celebration continue outside of the walls of our school and that our community takes note and applaud our young folks is always a good thing. Attended the Pancake Breakfast that is an annual breakfast sponsored by the Harold Arnold Foundation at Lot 3 this past, the past Saturday before class. There was a wonderful celebration of Father's Day at the Perkins Pool this weekend. It was just filled with lots of dads, lots of kids, just a wonderful gathering of music and just fellowship and folks coming together. And also attended the Woodrow Nash Grand Opening of the new art studio on Copley Road. Just a beautiful sight. So, I would encourage not only all of us who haven't had an opportunity to see it, but to consider taking some young folks there. I mean, it is worth them seeing. I know we have a lot of gifted young folks in some of our art programs to let them see what can happen if they can stay the course. Just beautiful work. It's just a wonderful thing to have Mr. Nash in our communities.
I was fortunate to be part of a selection committee for scholarships for the Joy Park Scholarship Foundation along with Carla Simply. And we had as well a number of Akron Public Schools students who were there and who were interviewed. And we will have those names shortly because the committee has began to select those students and we'll have those students who are named. And hopefully, at our next board meeting, I'll have names of Akron Public Schools students that would have been selected for the scholarship from Joy Park Foundation. So, it was really nice. I mean, some very bright kids and interesting talking to the kids. They always have some interesting stories in the background. It's just amazing sometimes. You just wonder how do some kids make it? But these kids are making it and they're going to make a difference in the world one day. So, we're glad to be involved with that. Thank you.
We do have one request to address the board. And Patty, I am so sorry, I forgot to ask someone how to properly pronounce your name.
So, you're not the only one. Where'd you like me?
Come on up to the podium.
Can you say it for us? Red Smitski.
Thank you.
That's what I thought it was, but I didn't.
Once you've had one of those names, you're much more cautious on pronouncing them.
I know. And this is Karen Collin. And Chris Esper. And Karen and I both, I am a retired Akron Public Schools teacher and Karen teaches. And we both taught at David Hill. We are going to...
I forgot to tell you, did they go over the rules with you at all?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. I'll give you a one-minute warning when you get down there.
All right.
Yep, we'll do that for you. That way, we don't take...
We represent Sammy's Dream, which is a nonprofit organization that is going to bring additions to playgrounds from schools or parks or build new playgrounds in schools or parks that are going to be inclusive for both general education students and handicapped students. Right now, we're in the process and have pretty much finished all plans for an addition to David Hill CLC with Playground World. It has been approved by the principal of David Hill, Karen Lydell Anderson over there, Fred Herr and Paul Fleischer from Facilities and Planning, and Deborah Fold. So, we've gone through all the channels. It's been approved. We have the plans that you see in your folder right there, the color renderings and the diagram that we'd like to add. It will be put on a place in David Hill's playground that is cement now, but they use an underlayment of safety type material and the various pieces of equipment can be used by all students. So, that's basically it. We're interested in getting an approval from the board to be able to do this. We have Jonathan Wright from Playground World ready and waiting to hear our final answer. We've been working on this for a couple of years now and finally, this has come to fruition and David Hill's the first playground we'd like to do. And then, carry on from there. Questions?
Maybe I missed this, but what is Sammy's Dream?
Sammy's Dream is a nonprofit that is going to work with schools, parks, various other things so that all children can play together cooperatively on playgrounds. So, it can be handicapped accessible and accessible to all kids.
How'd you guys get the name Sammy's Dream?
Karen's son had a handicap and has since passed away. And his name was Sammy. And he loved doing things on the playground and it was very limited as far as what he could do because they were not accessible to a lot of kids, especially with his handicap.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Our next order of business is Dr. McWilliams is going to give us an update.
So, on the agenda, it says Aspiring Principals Academy update, but actually, that was just a guise to get this man here. This is Denny Vazelli, who has been running our Aspiring Principals Academy. And we're actually here to recognize Denny. So, let me tell you a little bit about him because you may not know. For those of you who've known him for a long time, it's kind of fun because there are a number of his Aspiring Principal Academy graduates right here tonight who are going to board. Denny actually started as an educator here in the Akron Public Schools. He most famously talks about his years as principal at Bochtel CLC, back then, Bochtel High School, and talks very lovingly about his time at Bochtel. He then moved on to superintendent positions in the region. We know him mostly from when he was the superintendent at Summit County ESC and we continued our relationship with him there. But then, when he retired, and he has a history of retiring and not really retiring. When he retired, we quickly snatched him up to start doing work here in the Akron Public Schools. And he's done a few different things with us. He started working with our principals on school improvement strategies, especially focusing on engaging staff in leadership roles within the buildings. That's what he's known for. And then, we shifted him from that role. And this is all on a part-time kind of consultancy basis where he always said, you know, "Okay, I'll do this project." But then, we said, "Well, how about this next project?" And we just kept moving him to the next one. Then, he led our instructional rounds work where teachers and principals visit each other's classrooms and provide feedback. And that actually was so successful that we've been written up in two books that have been printed by faculty at Harvard University about the Instructional Rounds Group. When we received our Race to the Top Grant, we focused a lot of our energies around our Aspiring Principals Academy and creating a great leaders program where we would focus on inducting staff into what we call the APS Way of Leadership and focusing our energies on making sure that we're training people, giving them a full-time internship experience, but then also trying people out to make sure they're meeting our expectations before we commit to them. We tapped Denny to lead that effort and to lead that work. And he's been doing that for four years now. And he's decided that he's now done that for four years. He's ready to pass the torch on to the next leaders within my division to keep the torch going. But we wanted to appreciate the work that you've done tonight in front of the board. And I also wanted to give you a few stats on what has happened over these four years because this is rather interesting. Now, the program is a six-month training program and then a year-long internship. Denny has watched 62 aspiring principals cross through the program over the four years. And here's the results of those graduates. Twelve are now principals, senior principal level folks in the district. Twenty-three are assistant principals, deans, or administrative interns. And you'll see, once you stand up, if you are an APA graduate who are going to board tonight, look at that. Every single one but one that you'll meet who has already been assistant. He was already in the ranks before the Aspiring Principals Academy started. Seven of the graduates are coordinators or learning specialists. So, that's 67% of the APA graduates are now in administrative positions in the district. So, I've often been asked over the years, what's our greatest accomplishment over the past five years? And I always tout our Great Leaders Program and our Great Leaders Pipeline, which includes our Inspired Leaders Program, the Aspiring Principals Academy, and then the mentoring and support that we provide as we continue through. Certainly, it's our greatest accomplishment. So, tonight, we wanted to thank Denny for his years of service with the program and building it and establishing it as a strong program.
So, we have a certificate of appreciation. Thanks for all those early morning Saturdays. We had to come. So, basically, just a certificate of appreciation. Akron Public Schools recognizes Denny Vazelli for his years of dedicated service to our Aspiring Principals Academy and candidates. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Very few. First of all, thank you so much for this, but also for giving me the opportunity to do the kind of work that I feel has been very valuable and that has meant a lot to me personally as an educator. And I've always said, and I think they've heard it before, about the opportunity to go through APA and to go through an internship, that they are lucky to be able to have that kind of experience. There's very few places around, very few school districts that give educators like them an opportunity to actually experience what it's really like to be a principal and to kind of walk with them and to learn from them as they're doing their work. And it's been an incredible experience. I said, "I wish I would have had that same opportunity when I, way back when, when I did that." And I really want to commend Akron for doing that. And looking at this, this is an amazing group here. You're going to be very proud of these people in terms of the work that they are doing and that they will continue to do because they're... That's one of the things about this work, especially in the Aspiring Principals Academy. It's been fun because it's so great to be able to go to a session and have people that are excited and really into it. You're not like pulling teeth to try to get them. They're committed, they're excited, they're in, and they were really into it. And it was really, really tremendous experience for me too. Great way to end my career. And this is 47 years for me.
So, this is retirement number three or four?
I think it's going to stick though.
Well, I'm sure David will think of the next. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
How did she actually get you here? That's my question. You think she was going to have you do when you came forward? Because she had you really convinced that you had to come forward.
Well, we were, I suppose, she was going to do the present, you know, in terms of presenting, only she said she wanted to give the board an update on APA.
Just one presentation. He was going to help me with this. Very persuasive. Okay.
All right. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes from June 8th and the special meeting minutes from June 13th. Moved and seconded. Any question or concerns about those minutes? Hearing done, roll call please.
This is Sims. Reverend Walker. Mr. Alexander. Mr. Bravo. Mr. Hoss. Mrs. Mansfield. Mr. Miller.
Next is our superintendent recommendations.
All right, Madam President, I have a formal for your consideration. 67 personnel recommendations and supplement number one, the reappointment list for administrative staff. I would like to point out that in item 59, the effective date of that retirement for Mr. Monk is being revised from June 30th, 2015 to July 31st, 2015. And also, item number 51 should read fiscal year 16. I wasn't here fiscal year 6. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Moved and seconded. What questions do we have about personnel? Questions or concerns? I do want to mention Dana Nivelli was actually my French teacher. And she's retired from the district, so I want to wish her and all of those retiring, both the teachers and professional staff, and also, there's a couple of custodians on there as well who are retiring, wish them well. Thank you for their service. Anything else? Roll call please.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes, abstained from item number 65.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes, abstained from item 66.
Mr. Hoss. Mrs. Mansfield. Mr. Miller. Mrs. S.
And Madam President, at this time, I'd like Kathy McBates to introduce some of our new and maybe changed or moved around administrators.
All right. Tonight, first up is Sarah Corr. Sarah is a graduate of Firestone High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education for Boston Public School in May, 1996, and then received her master's degree from Akron U in 2003. In January, 2014, she received her principal license while in preparation for her principal academy, as you wrote earlier in the CV. She did her student teaching in 1995 in New South Wales, Australia. In 1998, she was hired as a full-time elementary teacher for Akron Public Schools. For the next 15 years, she taught various grade levels in several buildings, including Mason, Miller-South, and Case Elementary. In August, 2013, she was selected to be one of the district's first consulting teachers through the PE program and has now worked for two years in this role. She's being recommended tonight for the position of dean of students and she will be split .5 at Courage Path and the other .5 yet to be determined. Congratulations. All right, Tina McIntyre. Tina earned her bachelor's degree from Kent State University in 1986 and her master's from the university of Akron in 2008 and received her principal license in 2010. She did her student teaching in both Betty Jane Annex and Special Education and in the Stowe City Schools. She was employed by Akron Public Schools for a short year and then left us and returned in 2001, when she was again hired back in the public schools as a fifth-grade teacher looking at Kraus Elementary. She then worked for the next two years as a fourth-grade teacher at Schumacher Elementary and then left us with a brief layoff, following which she returned in 2009 and she was appointed as a K-2 literacy intervention teacher at Kraus, where she continued through 2012. In 2013, she was selected as an aspiring principal intern and then placed at Schumacher, where she continued through 2015. She's being recommended tonight for interim assistant principal and will be assigned to Smith Elementary. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I'm really, as Denny said, I am excited. I'm excited to start this school year and to work with the new staff and to meet my new students. So, thank you again.
Tara? Just walked in. That was a good timing. I was afraid you weren't going to make it tonight. Tara is a graduate of McKinnley High School in Canton. She earned her bachelor's degree in elementary ed from Florida A&amp;M University in 1995 and her master's in integrated learning with educational technology from Jacksonville University in 2003. She then earned a second master's degree in educational leadership from the University of North Florida in 2006 and received her principal license in August, 2014. She taught for various, a number of years in the Florida school system where she held various leadership roles throughout her tenure there. In 2007, she became an elementary assistant principal for the Duval County Public Schools and used best practices to effectively focus and allocate resources, such as staff budget and curriculum materials among poor, low-performing schools. In 2014, she began her career with Akron Public Schools as a dean of students at Case and Harris Elementary Schools. Tonight has been recommended as an interim assistant principal position and will be serving at Longdale Elementary. Congratulations.
Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm excited. It's been a great experience this first year, so I'm expecting good things for Longdale also. Thank you.
Erica Glover. Erica began working as a substitute teacher with Akron Public Schools in 2002. In 2007, she became a full-time intervention specialist at Bochtel High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in 2001 from the University of Akron, received her master's from Akron U, and is currently working toward a doctorate at Cleveland State. In 2012, she received her principal license after completing the Aspiring Principal Academy in 2014. Most recently, she was assigned as an administrative intern at Bochtel CLC and during her internship, Erica developed and invented the OK-BN-U program designed to build student self-efficacy and self-esteem. Erica was a former all-star basketball player in the National Women's Basketball League and has spent much of her time mentoring youth through sports and other community organizations. She was promoted to the position of dean of students at Bochtel in 2014 and tonight is being recommended for interim assistant principal position at Bochtel. Congratulations.
I would also like to say thank you, especially with opportunities. Again, in long-term set up, mentorships, positions, so thank you very much.
Is that the WNBA?
This is the league.
Which team?
I got traded, so San Jose, San Francisco.
Oh, we're glad we traded.
All right, Charles Morrison. Chuck is a graduate of Geneva High School. He received his bachelor's degree from the University of Akron in December, 99, and then earned his master's degree from Kent in May, 2008. He obtained his principal license in March, 2013. Mr. Morrison did his student teaching and physical education at the Akron Public Schools and in 2000 to 2001, he student taught at both Glover and Kent Middle School. He was subsequently hired as a full-time physical education teacher in August, 2001. And over the next 10 years, he taught in several Akron Public School buildings, specifically Barrett, Kent, Hyatt, Perkins, Goodrich, Goodyear, Essex, and Edison. In August, 2012, Mr. Morris was selected to be an APA, Aspiring Principal Academy intern, and was placed at Miller-South High, Miller-South School. In August, 2013, he was promoted to dean of students and assigned to both Garfield and Stump High Schools. Tonight is being recommended for the position of assistant principal at Stump. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the board and thank you for the APA program. I was up here two years ago as a dean doing the same thing. So, I do appreciate the opportunity and do like the APA program as building leaders within. So, thank you.
Deena Pope. Deena is a graduate of Hoben High School. She received her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Akron in December of 94 and then earned her master's degree from Akron U in May, 2014. She did her student teaching in the 94 and 95 school year in Springfield in both first and seventh grade. She began her employment with Akron Public Schools in 2007 when she was hired as a special education teacher at Garfield High School. In 2009, Deena Pope was appointed as a math coach and continued in this position for the next four years. In 2013, Deena Pope was selected to be a dean of students at North High School and has continued working in this capacity until the present time. Deena Pope is now being recommended for an assistant principal position at Stump. Miss Popa is now being recommended for an assistant principal position at Stump High School. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. We've had some wonderful experiences here at Akron Public Schools with families and students and, you know, colleagues. And I would agree with Chuck, too, that the APA Academy is just a fantastic leadership work right here. Anna Pannin. Anna is a graduate of Rowell High School. She earned her bachelor's degree from the University of Akron in 1987, and her master's from Mary Grove College in 2009. In 2011, she earned the title of national board certified teacher. She did her student teaching in Barberton City Schools in third and fourth grades, and then taught at St. Paul Catholic School for the next three years. In October 2007, Miss Pannin was hired as a first-grade teacher for Akron Public and assigned to Resnick Elementary. The following year, she became an intermediate elementary teacher at Rankin Elementary, and in 2012, she was selected as a language or social studies teacher for the National Veterans Hall of Fame. In 2013, she became a participant in the Inspired Leaders Program, and following in 2014, she was promoted to a dean of students and assigned to Hill and Sam Salem CLCs. She's recommended tonight for an interim assistant principal position, interim principal position at Sam Salem CLC. Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathy. And I just want to thank the board for this opportunity, and I have my mom with me, who is an all-of-high school graduate as well. And I said, "Mom, I'm going down to the board." I shared this with Eleanor. When I was a kindergartner at Hatton, I had to come down and read for the board back in 19, while we were resting at the bottom. It was such an unusual thing for a kindergartner to be able to read. So you can see how our work has changed in the elementary school since 19, fill in the blank. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving Akron in that capacity. Thank you.
Mr. Byron Finney. Byron is a graduate of Bochtel High School. He received his bachelor's degree from Alabama State University in May 1997, and his master's degree from Akron U in September 2000. He received his principal license in 2003. Mr. Finney did his physical education student teaching in the 1996 school year in Akron Public Schools at Mason Elementary and East High School. He was then hired as a full-time phys ed teacher in 1998, and spent six years as a physical education teacher in various buildings throughout the district. In 2004, Mr. Finney was appointed as a middle school assistant principal and worked at Goodrich Middle School and later Perkins Middle School. In 2009, Mr. Finney was placed as a high school assistant principal at East CLC, where he has continued to work until the present time. Tonight, he's being recommended for the interim principal position at East CLC. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Blatt, Dr. McWilliams, Lieutenant James, and School Board just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to continuing to do great things for Akron Public Schools, our products, and look forward to working well with the community also.
That's it. Thanks.
Just, we all didn't clap because you all was going to be this grand thing to hear from all of you, so we'll clap now. Just wanted to say, just so with a true testament, you all will be to your students, too, to know that there are opportunities to do great things, and just going through the academy probably wasn't the easiest thing to do in addition to being a full-time assistant principal or dean of students or what have you, but showing them that the hard work that you will put in, it will pay off in the end, and you guys come back to serve. So thank you, and we look for great things from you as well.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and four resolutions.
Look at them, get ready to leave.
They waited for my signature.
On the consent agenda, and for item one, on the approval of the financial report for the month of May, you have a revised page three in front of you. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move. Second.
Next, seconded. Any questions or concerns? Harry Matt, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
The only item I have to report tonight is I will be sending at the next board meeting a resolution similar to what I did last year for the LeBron James Promise Project. I believe this year, as we finalize the details, there will be two homes that will have landscaping work done, so I'll have a resolution to allow our Browns Department to volunteer as part of that program.
I had one of those Mondays, so I will apologize. There is no president's report today. It was just something else today, so I will give my time to the treasure if you would like it.
I'll pass as well. I'll refer mine to our finance committee. Cheers.
Committee reports tonight. Anything from legal and policy?
We're going to pass.
All right. On to finance.
Just briefly, we did have a finance committee meeting. Just briefly, the topics we discussed, and we have, will be continuing, part of the Education Service Center, which we reapproved, and just like to point out one thing, we have money, we'll do, we did discuss is professional development for principals, which dovetails with, you know, what we just went through here. We're also looking at the health insurance plan, specifically minimum value plan, that we need to have in place after our consultants are done, looking at the Affordable Care Act, and if we have to bring any other employees under our health insurance. And we're working, and district's working on the health insurance renewal as well, so that's it.
Policy and student achievement. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I did make a request for the resolution. I didn't bring it here. I don't know.
Do I talk about that?
No, I said wait till the next one.
Okay. So then, I need a motion pursuant to how revised code section 121.22G3 to, for the board to adjourn into executive session to consult with legal counsel.
I move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 28 business affairs recommendations, and also note that on item number 25, that has been revised, and a new item, 25, is at your place, Matt. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. I move. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about business affairs? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 28 business affairs recommendations, and also note that on item number 25, that has been revised, and a new item, 25, is at your place, Matt. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. I move. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about business affairs? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.